They won't appreciate that, but it's okay.
I'm all for that. I could probably sleep here.
And he's way back in the back. He is afraid. Look at him all right there in the back.
He calls me twice today.
Everyone's getting calls. I don't get any calls from... I did have to meet with Don.
At this time of year.
Five o'clock by Verizon time, so if we want to get started, everyone, we'll call to order the meeting of the Morgan County Council for November fifteenth, 2021. Kelly O'Callaghan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Vicki Kivitt will then lead us in prayer. If you'll all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this free country in which we live in, and as we face this time of Thanksgiving, we just want you to know how thankful we are for each and every little thing that you provide in our lives on a daily basis, much of which we take for granted. We just pray for those who need you in their life on special needs that are going through tributes and tribulations and just need your loving arms around them, dear Lord. We thank you for our farmers who are busy in the fields and working hard to feed the world, dear Lord. And dear Lord, we just pray that you be with us, each and every one of us, as we go through this business, that it be best and beneficial for the people in which we serve. And all these things we pray in your precious name. Amen.
Everyone's present this evening, so we can have it noted, Deb, that all are in attendance. It's like the... Okay. Got it? I don't know if they can hear. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. All right. We have minutes from October fourth and October eighteenth. Did everyone have a chance to get those, read over those? If there's any questions or comments, if not, I look for a motion to approve.
Chip Keller makes a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion.
Jason Maxwell seconds.
Thank you. Chip Keller and Jason Maxwell. Looks like first up on our agenda this evening are some additional appropriations, and that being the reason that we did have to reschedule our meeting because there were additional appropriations on it and our local paper didn't get it published in time. So we'll begin with that. Looks like we have a Veteran Service Officer additional appropriation. Do we have any? Oh, Rick's here. I didn't see you, sir.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So there was an approval for the Deputy Veteran Service Officer, but I don't think there was appropriations.
Tip your mic a little bit, Rick.
Can you hear me now? No? Yes? Okay. Anyway, the approval for the Deputy Veteran Service Officer was made earlier this year, but the appropriations for that weren't made, so now we're coming to fill that gap.
That additional request can be reduced. The amount that does need to be appropriated is $1,683. The... But that combined with the transfers that are being requested, which all... The transfers need to be approved in their full amounts, but the additional can be reduced to $1,0683.
In your letter, in your packet on the second page there, it goes over the additionals and the transfers that come to a total of, I believe... Well, it'll be different than this now.
It's gonna be a little bit different.
It was $5,121.05, but then that will be reduced.
To $4,901.
Thank you. So at this time, what we're looking at is just the additional appropriation to the Veterans, from the General Fund to the Veteran Service Office of $1,683.
Kelly O'Callaghan makes a motion to approve $1,683.
Thank you, Kelly.
Troy Sprinkle second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Rick. Emergency Medical Services.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening. So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Ben Torey. I'm the newly appointed Deputy Director. Been in this position for about a week. Director Blair is under the weather, so... Director Blair's under the weather, so what we're asking for is a total of $7,092 in additional appropriations. What this would be for is for an asset management platform that would be added on to our ESO. ESO is our patient care reporting software that we use to do all of our patient charting, and they are now offering some assets and logistics management platform that will help us track our supplies. So obviously with COVID this year and last year, prices on healthcare items have gone through the roof and have caused our budget for those items to... So what we're looking at doing is just better tracking of our supplies at our various stations. We have supplies sitting at all the firehouses. Some of those have expirations, and it's very hard to track those. Almost every item that we have has an expiration date on it, including like alcohol pads, all the way up to medications, and some of those are expensive to replace and just sit there. So this will allow us to actually track every single item that has an expiration date and rotate that in to busier trucks to actually get used, as opposed to just sitting there and expiring and spoiling and having to replace kind of at our cost. It also allows us to restock very accurately. So right now, what we do is we kind of eyeball what we think we need, and we kind of hope that that matches the demand, which is almost impossible to predict. But this will allow us, run for run, every single run, we document exactly what we used, and that's exactly what gets replaced, as opposed to just estimating. So I think what we've been told is that other agencies that use this, it pretty much pays for itself with the money saved. And we're looking at the appropriations now because it takes, they're about six to eight weeks behind on all the other services that are in line to get this up and rolling. So it's gonna take about six to eight weeks to get this started, and we're hoping to get it started January first, the new budget cycle.
So this is a cost to get it up and running?
Yes, to get it up and running.
Is there then a monthly fee or any additional fees that go into it on a regular basis to maintain it?
I believe it's an annual fee, so I believe that covers the first year.
Then year after, how, like if we go... And is it prorated? I mean, if you're going into it now in January?
We're gonna pay the whole cost upfront just for the full year.
And that'll be for '22 also?
Yes, that'll start January of '22 and go forward. But we'd have to pay for it now to get it up and running, basically in line.
So what's the...
The breakdown on... The breakdown is, they're in your packet, there's this document. There's ESO at the top, and you'll see at the bottom, the reoccurring fees is $5,790. And then there's the one-time setup fee, the $2,090, and there's a discount given to pay it at this point in time. But yes, there's gonna be a reoccurring cost. But Ben and Keenan and Nona and I, we met and discussed this, and this undoubtedly pays for itself because it helps with, like Ben has said, keeping track of the supplies, where they're located, what the expiration dates, and if they're needing supplies on one bus, and they can look and see, well, we've got some on here in this other location, and we can move them around. Would feel very sure that there's been that, there's been several hundred dollars of, you know, lost inventory from expirations and not being able to track it as closely as it needs to be tracked.
Is this a barcode scanning system that you'll co-in and, you know, where you keep your supplies and everything?
Yeah, I don't have a barcode system with it. So we'll be individually tagging every item that has an expiration, and we'll know exactly where it's at to get it and rotate it out.
Do you know how long it's been on your radar to implement this? I guess what I'm gonna ask, and maybe you don't know why you didn't include it at budget time.
Well, it's, this platform is new for, to ESO, so it wasn't available to us. We didn't know it was available initially, and we started reaching out to look at different options. And our ESO folks said, hey, we've got this. It's coming out, so...
Well, we appreciate you finding ways to track and keep track of things. I know Kelly and I had toured back at Budget Time, your facility there on Morgan Street, and even though it is in a good, kind of, I don't want to say caged, but it kind of was caged, the equipment things, there didn't seem to be an order about it. It was just boxes and boxes of things. So I think that would be a better way of tracking what you have there. It's a good idea. Anyone else have any other questions? Melissa?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So to maintain like the log on this, like after every run it's updated? Or once a day? Or how's that managed?
It's reconciled after every run. So every run, you're gonna use some supplies, some more than others. And it's, the way it was explained to me is it's on what treatment procedures you do, and, you know, you complete a run, and it'll ask you, we think we used all this equipment, and you'll verify that the assets were used, exactly the quantities. So you're, you know, it's true one-for-one replacement, so you're not overstocking or understocking. It's accurate.
Then when you bill on the runs, when you bill the patient, all that is put on the bill as well? Whatever supplies you've used?
Well, that's, and then, well, we can't bill, we can't itemize for supplies under the Medicare rules, so it's based on level of service.
Now, there's a fee scheduled adopted by the Commissioners for the ambulance service.
Flat rate then is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's flat rate. We can use one item or a thousand items at the same price, so...
And there'll be someone to oversee making sure that that reconciliation is done?
Yes, it'll get done every single run. We'll verify it.
Any other questions or concerns? I look for a motion.
Kelly O'Callaghan will make that motion to approve $7,092.
Thank you, Kelly. We have a motion to approve the $7,092 as an additional appropriation from the General Fund to the Emergency Medical Services Fund. Do I have a second?
Vicki Kivitt will make that second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, and welcome aboard.
This next item is the, whenever we estimated the amount of money needed for the supplemental pay paid to the county employees, the, we did not, the dollar amount kept changing. And so the amount we had calculated for FICAN per was insufficient, or the appropriated amount is insufficient. And so we need this $15,200 to clean that up. This is connected to the $3,000 bonus that was paid in October.
So we have a request for an additional appropriation from the General Fund of $15,201. Oh, I'm sorry, from Rainy Day.
Vicki Kivitt makes a motion that we approve this $15,201 from 11-86 into 11-86-165-10.
Jason Maxwell seconds.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Just one other comment, so you'll not be prepared, that come the February meeting next year, we'll have an additional, in the rainy day, for the elected officials bonus that couldn't be paid this year.
Right. And looks like we have an additional on property acquisition. Kenny, you gonna speak on that? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're gonna see before you, I already have a spreadsheet that I had passed down. It's the training that we've already did up to date out there on Willowbrook. I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of that. You see that total amount down there in the bottom left corner? That's what we've done with just SWAT team training only. We will be doing SWAT training. Please, please, don't put it in the paper, please. If I can. We're gonna be doing that up till the Fourth of December. We will be doing live fire training starting the Fourth. You'll have rain township starting it off. You're gonna have Russian township burning December the eleventh, and we're still working with Martinsville and Madison when their burn dates are, so... It's moving along. They're prepping it. I started prepping it with the guys, and they're actually, since I kind of went down this week, they're actually doing it theirself now, so I appreciate that. As far as was before you tonight, you're gonna see that this is a single house out there in Willowbrook that I fat fingered, if you remember, and that's why we have two grants instead of one 2018 PMG or PDMG grant. We actually had two, because PDMG, whenever I submitted it, pre-disaster mitigation grant, I had two 3310s, even though I had 3310, 3410, 10 photos of each structure, legal descriptions, property record cards. They still would not accept it, and I had to redo that one, the separate HMGP, which is a hazard mitigation grant. It's a lot easier. I kind of went around and around with FEMA and Homeland to be able to do that because a PDMG is a lot more paperwork, a lot more time writing it, and by just doing one, I was able to get them to let me do an HMGP, so... The bad news, though, the appraisals, I had one appraisal done on that house already, just to see where it was gonna come in, and they did whack that grant about in half what I submitted originally in 2017. The total award on that grants only, I'm gonna give it to you so you guys know. Total award on that grant, including the match, is only $13820. The cost for the house on the one appraisal come back at $152,000, just for the house alone for acquisition, not counting anything as far as well-being retired, septic being pumped, closing costs, title work, demolition, asbestos inspection, none of that, none of that would even start to cover any of that. So that's why we're here tonight, asking for the $70,000. What I did, I just rounded numbers, because I'm used to the council being honest alone. I just rounded up to 160 is gonna be the average, even though I've not had two appraisals done yet. And I will pass this appraisal down, so you can look on the third page and see what it is. But that's the only, I don't have a copy of this.
How many houses are left out there, Kenny?
I've closed on eight. I've got three more that I'm working on closing right now.
And they're all still standing, right?
They're all still standing right now. Yes. They will all be coming down. Eight of them will be coming down pretty soon for the year's end. I'm trying to hold off on the other ones just a little bit longer because I gotta have 90 days down. Unless I go to FEMA and Homeland Security and get an extension, I gotta have them done within 90 days. I did get the extension on training and the extension on 90-day time period on them. But FDIC's already let me know, Kenny, we couldn't do it on this year's because you didn't get that approved from FEMA till late, which basically they approved it before, the week before training this year for FDIC, the Fire Department Instructors Conference. But they are moving it back to, into March first, April this year. They would like me to hold them a couple houses for training. They could bring a lot of people down and a lot of apparatus. And I said, I'll try, but I can't promise it. I do have three property owners that I'm working with, though, that one of them, he don't have a problem waiting. The other two, I don't know how it's gonna work. As far as dollar amount, we're not where we need to be on that right now, so I might not even get them closed. But I do have, there's 15 out there, and I've got eight of them purchased. The 15 is including this one on the HMGP, though. So there's 14 underneath the 2018 PDMG. There's one underneath HMGP. And the reason why I used 160 for average, just so I knew about what to ask for, so I went ahead and deducted what I felt like we was gonna need as far as the line item goes, that you see there in front of you. They only did on the acquisition line item, $113,520. So you take that off, that leaves me about $47,000. The match you're gonna see at the bottom of that page is $33,455. I know I'm gonna have a little bit of in-kind match with SWAT team training and fire, so that's why I asked for only $70,000 instead of 80, so...
Any further questions for Commissioner Hale?
One last thing. On the rosters, all you see is the personnel for man. You don't, I didn't figure any of the apparatus in because we do get for using FEMA rates on their vehicles or black trucks and stuff. I know this family has been in limbo and stuff for quite a while, because they was in the original batch. It started back in 2017. So I kind of feel a little extra sorry for them because it's, even though the other ones have been started being bought out, they've been, I can't do anything with you right now because I don't have enough funding. It's not really fair, but it's, I'm the one that did the fat finger when I put it in the computer on them. I mean, that's my fault. And I felt like the Riverboat was the best way to start with, to come up with the funding. We started back in '05. That's what we started buying waiver out with. The best revenue source to start buying waiver out, and that's why we used the Riverboat to start with.
So we have a request of $70,000 from the Riverboat Fund for property acquisition. Anybody have any questions before we...
Vicki Kivitt makes a motion that we approve $70,000 from account 11-91, property acquisition.
Kim Meredith will second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
That completes our additional appropriations, I believe. So we'll move on to, we have some transfers. And looks like the first one begins with the Veteran Service Officer.
Right. This is, this transfer, line share of this transfer is just finishing up the amount, money needed to transfer for the Deputy Veteran Service Officer account. And then there also is a need to, for another 100, for $150 for years of service bonus, and then money needed for the barrel soldier's account, and that's...
And for those new to the council, we have this a lot at the end of the year, towards the end of the year, we'll have things that people retire or leave their position and things, and there's payouts that we just transfer from one place to another to move it over to make that complete. So that's kind of a cleanup at the end of the year. Anyone have questions on any of this? See, there's a lot, a lot of places we're moving it from. I mean, travel and lodging, memorial flags, office supplies, postage, dues and subscription. So those are all funds that you have, the funds there to make that transfer.
Yes, right. These were, all these transfers were done to minimize the amount of the additional appropriations, so...
Kelly O'Callaghan will make a motion to transfer $4,868 from various funds as presented to other various funds as presented in the agenda.
Kelly O'Callaghan and Chip Keller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mark.
I have a couple of different items going on. One is a transfer for $300 to longevity pay for myself and Tori. Never crossed my mind. I put it in my budget because I didn't see it coming, and next year it's gonna be the same thing again because I forgot it again.
Gotcha.
Just giving you a heads up for next year.
So this is a request of a transfer of $300 from other supplies to years of service. Any questions or anything on this one? Pretty cut and dry. I look for a motion.
Jason Maxwell makes that motion.
You?
Troy Sprinkle second.
Didn't let her have her first second, Troy.
You're next.
Motion from Kelly and a second.
Motion from Jason.
Oh, Jason. I'm sorry. Jason and Troy.
You're right. Jason and Troy.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. And then did you have another one you wanted to bring up?
It's right there. It's the second group.
So it's on here, right?
Right here.
Well, I thought he had one he brought to my attention that wasn't gonna be on here.
For the trailer? Yes. Yeah, it's on here.
Oh, okay.
That's that next series.
Okay.
Those are EMA also.
I just thought you had stopped me for one that you thought wasn't on the...
That's a whole nother thing.
Oh, okay. I knew you, I knew there was something. All right.
Separated them.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So we applied for a grant for a trailer, mass casualty supplies, and hazmat supplies. The, we got awarded the grant for the trailer, which was, I think, right around $14,000, I think.
Right.
And, but they didn't give us anything to go inside of it. So I met with Keenan and Summer Brown to see what we'd have to have for mass casualty. And we're wanting to set that up for mass casualty for 24 people. So if we have a bus crash or any type of things, I'm at the school, hazmat with mass casualty, we can treat that. I've got everything broken down. Outdoor lighting, dry erase board to go on the side of the trailer, triage flags. Whenever you do a triage, you'll lay out tarps to bring the patients to. So you'll have a green tarp, yellow, red, and a black tarp for depending if they're injured. These flags would mark those tarps off where you could see it from a distance. Three boxes of vacuum-sealable bags and folding chairs, so we can take the things that are towels, sheets, blankets, and we can vacuum seal those and put them in there to keep them fresh and without dirt on them. We had one that we're gonna probably, since the time we priced that trailer, I met with Spencer Trailer Sales, and the cost of aluminum and steel has skyrocketed, and that trailer's gonna come in a little more than we thought. So we're gonna have a $2,000 overage there. And some shipping costs. So that's what that transfer is about, the transfer from several different line items to a line item supplies other to pay for these sorts of things. Inside that trailer as well will be stuff for hazmat cleanup. And I have, we've already purchased that out of our budget. We've already purchased quite a bit of stuff out of... And I have, uh, we've already purchased that out of our budget, and we've already purchased quite a bit of stuff out of our supply for this trailer. Uh, we just did a fuel spill with Perrigan, where they had the septic truck turn over and used quite a few supplies on it. Uh, it's a good thing we had it, uh, in the truck and ready to use. So that's what those transfers are about, to stock this trailer.
But for purposes of accounting and budget, it's all grouped under operating supplies.
Appreciate that.
Dan, we're still waiting on, we signed our part for EMA for that grant, so we're waiting on it to, I think it comes to you before it goes to the commissioners, doesn't it?
For the? For the approval, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so hopefully we're gonna be able to get it by December the 15th or something, I don't, we'll see.
Okay, so we, so I'm reading this, we have a request to remove, take $5,000 from contractual services, $2,000 from maintenance repair, $1,000 from other supplies, and move it for a total of $8,000 to operating supplies.
Yes.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I look for a motion.
Kelly Ocala will make that motion. $5,000 from contractual services, $2,000 for maintenance repair, $1,000 from other supplies, to $8,000 total to operating supplies.
Melissa Green seconds that motion.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Just to mention, Tori will send this to, uh, Dan for the next meeting. Um, our D-Fib unit for the EOC and for 911 Center is a Phillips, and we can no longer get parts for that, no batteries, no pads, they don't make them. So we're gonna have to buy a Zoll, and we hopped on EMS's contract for a Zoll. And, uh, it's gonna be $1,710 to purchase that. And Tori has found the money in our budget to transfer, so I'll be on next month's agenda hopefully for that. And we can get it purchased, because right now we're without a D-Fib later.
We like those transfers, yeah. Tell Tori, kudos for the transfers.
No, she's obviously the brains of this operation when it comes to this.
She's doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Officers. Good evening, Mr. Rogers.
Good evening, Council. So generally this time of year, we're coming asking for money, and we don't need to do that this year. Um, due to some staffing shortages, um, we have some money left over in a project we'd like to complete. I did send an email out to everyone with the quote that we'd received as well and been in front of the commissioners. But a short story is, we have some code case detectives that some of you may not realize exist. Uh, but in our county, we have six code case detectives that volunteer their time and help with our other detectives on cases that are very old cases that we are still investigating. Um, until this point, they have been working out of a facility, uh, that's been basically donated to them to work out of, and we felt it was appropriate to get them back into our office and at the detective building where all the other detectives are. So, uh, we'd just like to transfer $30,000 for that project, uh, into a maintenance and repair line item, so that we can get the offices, it'll be constructing two offices inside the current detective building in the training room, uh, which is kind of undersized for our department now, so we're not gonna really lose anything and still keep a training area.
So you'll still have adequate space?
Yeah. Can answer any questions you may have.
So we have a request to move $30,000 from correction officers to repair and maintenance.
Vicki Kivett makes a motion to approve that.
Kim Meredith will second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay, Local Income Tax Economic Development Fund, Parks and Recreation. We all look to Kenny when we say Parks and Recreation, don't we?
We're here tonight, and I know the letter's got three of them on there, but if you notice, the first one is a 21-500 number. We had not passed yet, and that's why this other first request is on there for $327.20. It's in the 2220 number, which don't take council action, but since commissioners hadn't approved it at that time when we did the letter, i- it's on there. Um, we could have done letters, but we didn't do that, thought it'd be more confusing at this time with the elders' office not to do that. So basically, the contractual services and the repair maintenance, the $6,572.60, um, transferring from program supplies into contractual services, requesting the 1206, uh, and 20 cents going into repair maintenance. Um, so basically, we need transferred $7,778.80 only. And then, um, we would be good.
Okay.
Seventy-seven, seventy-eight, eighty is what you said.
Correct, that's what we actually need. Because they'll transfer the rest of them since we're assigned, but I told Joyce, "I'm not gonna do another letter, we're just gonna leave it the way it is, and we're just gonna let you guys be aware we didn't need that one." We're trying, it's gonna be really close, um, really trying to protect contractual services. Uh, the reason being, we had $100,000 budgeted, we're doing the whole outside-inside of Wilbur School. I don't know who's got to go up there and look at it. I know the neighbors are getting to go up there a lot, they love seeing the progress. You're probably gonna see that wrapped up in another three weeks.
Oh.
Everything completely done, it's looking really good inside and out.
It is.
Um, so, um, I know me and Lita's both tickled pink, and it's, um, it's looking really good. But we're trying to protect that, I know we have another drawdown request, I'm gonna be submitting tomorrow on that with Dan's office. Um, and then we're gonna try to get the other one in before December 3rd, I believe, to his office, so they can finish up and be paid January's claims. It's kind of our go, working with the contractor. So that one, we've been trying to protect, we've had to rob quite a bit out of, um, program supplies. Um, so that's, we're trying to protect it, because we still got a little bit of expense with sand in the park coming up. We run between 1,500, 1,000, 1,500 kids through the haunting, went really good. Um, everybody loved it, we was not able to run the hayride this year. The hayride got washed out, and two of our, um, little farm town houses went floating down the river. So I let Lita know that, hey, as soon as that river goes down, you gotta go down the river and find them where their lives are bringing them back, so...
Okay, so we have a request of a transfer from program supplies for a total, we've ran, we've rounded off here, $8,107 to operating supplies, contractual services, repair and maintenance, to again, the total of $8,107.
Vicki Kivett makes that motion to, uh, approve this transfer.
So we don't need the 328, so isn't that $7,779?
Well, might as well include it, I mean...
Include it.
As presented.
Okay, that's fine.
So we have a motion, do I have a second?
Chip Keller, seconds.
Thank you, Chip, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero, thank you.
Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
I mean, he does need it, Kelly, it just didn't require council action.
I've asked Tony Hinkel, our county engineer, to, to join us this evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time. I'm here at the request of the Council President. Here it says the presentation of the 2022 and 2023 pavement plan. Unfortunately, that's not fully complete yet, however, uh, I did wanna go through the process going through and kind of explain, um, the methodology and what the future of the paving program is going to look like in our Highway Department. One of the big factors on what we're doing going forward, uh, that you may have a lot of questions on, is the community crossings. So, let me go ahead and give you a, a kind of a broader picture of what the community crossings, matching grant funds, um, are used for. We have used them almost exclusively for paving. However, they can be used for other things. We can use it for a bridge project, we can use it for drainage work, um, we can use, and use it for sidewalks, just not new sidewalks. We can retrofit for ADA and stuff like that. So there are a lot of different things, but the, the easiest way to use it, the most effective way, is usually with paving. That's what a lot of the counties do. Some big bullet points for community crossings, um, there are two calls for applications a year. Uh, that's in January and July, um, usually. COVID had that, that issue, obviously, um, that delayed some of those calls. So there are two calls a year. Um, you can have, in a community, as a county, we can get a 50-50 match, up to a million dollars in a calendar year. So from January to December, in those two calls, we can do as many projects up to, we can do as many projects as we want. The max match that we will get is a million dollars. So if I apply with, uh, $2 million in projects, it'll be a million out of our pocket, a million out of the, out of the state fund. So, um, you can have more than one community crossing out and available at one time. Currently, right now, we actually have, uh, two community crossing grants. We have the, um, 2020-2 and the 2021-1 grants that are open. Um, we will close both of those out this year. Both of those grants were used this year in paving. We get the 50-50 match because we are a county of greater than 50,000 population. Under 50,000, it can be a 75-25 match, so, um... Once you're awarded a community crossings grant, you have six months to bid it, to give it to a contractor, uh, and you have 18 total months to close it out. So as they give you that million dollars, you can do whatever project is for 18 months. That's kind of why paving is a good, a good source of using this money, because, uh, bridge projects can typically take longer, especially if you run into environmental concerns. So paving is something that's much more structured. Now, once you apply and do your application for community crossings, uh, that's pretty much locked in. Once the call is open and closed, uh, your projects will be reviewed, and you will be given money based on those projects. You can't add to that call after the fact. You can't do change orders, so they are kind of locked in. They cannot be bid before they are awarded, so that's kind of, uh, gotten me in the loop. Last year, it kind of put me behind the, the eight ball once. I'm learning, so I have been here for four calls in the Highway Department. Uh, the first call that I was here for, I was in the job for about three weeks, uh, and we did not get an award, because I wasn't really sure what I was doing. So I did an application, I did apply, um, there were some deficient, uh, some deficiencies in it. We got that corrected for the next call, the 2020-1, or, yeah, excuse me, the 2020-2 call, I did apply for. We applied for over $2 million in projects. One of the project, projects that I did submit was rejected for a, a naming convention issue with the state. So last year in 2020, we were awarded, uh, about $915,000 from the state. We put that out to bid this year, uh, and it'll close out here soon, so we'll be within our 18-month window. Uh, we'll end up using about $840,000 of that, 915, only because the bids that we put out for that were low. Because as our estimating, when you're doing projects for these submittals, you're all estimating. Uh, and our bids came in spectacular. So they were, they were less than what our cost estimation was. Uh, so that left us local money to do more roads that, that we end up paving with. This last year, we were awarded a million dollars. Uh, we're gonna end up using about $935,000 of that, again, because our bids came in so low. Uh, unfortunately, we were not able to do the second call, because by the time we bid the first call and found out that we were only gonna use $935,000, the second call was already closed. So we now have a methodology and how we wanna progress forward over the next several years, um, to avoid that from now on. So our plan going forward, uh, and again, I was hoping to have the 2022 and 2023 done by, by this time, we're just not there yet. Um, we're still evaluating some of the roads, we're still working with the commissioners. But the next $5 million in planning for paving will be done in the next month, uh, and I will convey that to you as well. Um, we have $2.9 million in our budget for next year. That's already been approved by the council. That is our paving budget for next year. That does not include chip and seal, that is mostly just HMA overlay or, or any kind of, of, uh, uh, roadwork that we wanna do in that, in that paving lineup. The chip and seal we'll do ourselves in-house. That 2.9 million will be what we use for our paving budget next year. We will not use any CCMG money. However, I will apply in January. Will apply in January, hoping to get the million-dollar award. That will give us time to turn around and bid it in the June timeframe, see what our bids come in. If we have less than a million dollars of bid work out, we'll be able to apply again in July and get any kind of remaining bid under that million-dollar award. So, we will use 2.9 million in local funds next year. The application I do in January, we will bid in June for 2023 paving, if that makes sense. So there'll be a stagger there, okay? So while we, we will be awarded the billion dollars in the calendar year, but use it for our next year's paving. So the next $5 million that I want will be done in a month, will be $2.9 million for next year and the $2 million that we will apply with in January. And that's our $5 million in paving. With that $5 million, we should get a million dollars back. So that $5 million should turn into $6, if that makes sense.
It does, but that's, it does get complicated.
It does.
On how you process that. And that's why I'd ask Tony to come tonight and kind of give us a overview of how this process works, because it's not a matter of just you qualify or you don't qualify, there's a process to it, so just, did everybody understand that totally? There'll be a test later.
Yeah, there are, there are several different, there are several different steps that go on behind the scene. Uh, I do an asset management plan every year, uh, that has to get submitted to LTAP. In fact, I'm working on that right now to be done by December 1st. Uh, that has to be completed for us to be even eligible to apply for community crossings next year. Um, our ADA plan, I've been working with, uh, Dree, uh, we have been working towards, uh, developing and completing this requirement uh, that hasn't been done for 20 years, that has been pushed for and pushed for and pushed for. Uh, I, I greatly appreciate Dree's effort, efforts in helping us, uh, get this accomplished. So, um, there are several other pieces that all fit together that you hopefully don't ever see or really hear about to make all of this work and run.
If you applied timely and all, what would be some of the reasons they would deny you?
So, uh, one of our projects was taken out. Now, when I say I do an application, um, we do anywhere from 15 to 30 road projects at one time for an application.
Okay.
Uh, and, and Dan, you're probably gonna hate me, you're probably gonna break all of those out next year, so we'll have to have different line items for each one of those. Uh, that'll give us the lowest bidder. Um, but in that one application, they'll compare everything in there. They'll do a cost estimate, because you have to have a detailed cost estimate for each one of those projects, and that's what I've been doing. One of our roads that we submitted for last year, um, we had as a, a road name that is in our ordinance, however, the state-certified road name was different. And because that state-certified road name was different, they excluded that project. So it's like that. We, we have not actually done a state-certified road inventory in seven years. So, uh, that is getting accomplished now. Uh, it will be done by this year, uh, that'll be completed, and then we won't have this problem. But I've already combated that with anything I'm doing prior to that, I'm actually bouncing off end up before the applications do.
Okay.
So they're, they're seeing our work before the app, the application. So we do fully expect, as long as the money is there, we do fully expect to meet all of their requirements, not to have any projects rejected, um, funding will just be based on the available funding that they have.
Thank you. So, yeah, I had a quick question, just to make sure I understand. So you have a plan on what you want to pave, but you can't get bids on that until we've applied for the grant and been awarded the money?
Correct.
And we have to have the same amount, up to a million dollars, before they will, so we, we were basically getting a, a million dollars, okay?
That is correct.
But, but it's not bid until after we've been awarded?
That is correct. So that's also why, one of the issues that we're doing it like this, um, we have previously been getting community crossings, we apply in January, uh, we get community crossings money, we are then awarded that in March, April timeframe, then we put out our bid... we are then awarded that in March-April timeframe, then we put out our bid for a March-April timeframe for projects to go out that year. What that leads to is, we just finished paving last week. We are still doing roadstone. It snowed this weekend, we are still doing stone along road, and we will for the next week or two.
And that grant money can't be used for the chip and seal, it's only for paving?
It can be used for the material for chip and seal, and we can do forced labor. One of the issues is accounting for that. The other issue is, you could only have up to $250,000 of that. A third issue is splitting out those certain projects for that chip and seal material. It, it gets a lot more complicated when, we can just do it in-house, we have a line item for everything else. It makes it much cleaner, simpler, easier, not just for Dan, but for, for our purposes in general, and for the contractors. But timing-wise, from now on, we will look at bidding an advertisement and an opening in, an advertisement in November, a bid opening in December, an advertisement in June, and a bid opening in July. What that does then is, we are on the front end of the paving contractors, and we're getting their better prices, because now they're scheduling us early, and we're going to put in the specs in the contract that you're done by July 1st. So, if we put the bid opening in December, and you're done by July 1st, that gives them plenty of time. I was, I didn't put in a date this last year for paving. I did not know how I-69 was going to affect haul routes, I didn't know how they were going to affect contractors' availability, so I needed to give them some flexibility. So, we, we did have a deliberate approach to why we didn't have a date set this, this time in the paving. From now on, though, paving is going to be done by July 1st of the year. Then we'll stone after that, we'll continue to do chip and seal through August and September timeframe.
What if they don't meet the July 1st, for whatever reason, what recourse is there?
Liquidated damages. They're liquidated damages, they'll be spelled out in the contract. If they don't meet by the July 1st deadline that we'll set in our, in our specifications, then they will owe us money back.
Okay.
But the big thing, though, Tony, is that we're bidding basically at the same time, more or less, but we're not asking them to pay to be done until the following year. Excuse me.
So, so for this year, we'll, again, like, we had, we'd hoped to have the advertisement out, get the approval that this commission's meeting today. We're, we're just not there yet. We will have that out in December. The advertisement will be out, will open in January, and then that'll always, that'll just be local funds. But we'll, we will bid in January, we'll open the bids in January, they'll be done with that by July 1st. We will bid again in June, open those in July, the next bids, that paving will be done that following year.
Got it.
And that still stays within that 18-month window of has to be closed out.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to come and explain that to us.
There was a time, they did change the rules. There was a time that you could bid and, and receive the bids before you applied for community crossings, but they ran into some nightmare situations in some counties, and so they changed the rules to, you're, you're not allowed to bid, you're not allowed to go out to bid until you know how much money you're going to get.
Exactly.
That would make it more competitive, right?
Well, and, and.
Some that were overextending themselves.
Correct. Yes, if you had some counties and municipalities that, that, that could commit some of that money, but then their bid would come in, and they didn't get all the state matching, then they still had to fund more money to meet that whole bid, or else the entire bid's thrown out.
Yeah.
Any other questions, concerns?
We're good, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate those that have been out to the Highway Department, and we expect, we'd love to have the rest of you out as soon as you make yourself available.
Tuesday.
We'll see you then, thanks.
Thank you. All right. 2022 jail and health department nurses, yes, Duri is on her way.
It was brought to our attention, at our jail nurses, we have two full-time, and we have two board of health nurses full-time, that they were previously, before we did the WIS study, they were marked not exempt, and they got overtime, and that's the premise that they were hired under. And then, when WIS did the study, none of us realized that they had changed them to exempt, where they wouldn't get overtime. And this year, we've had a ton of overtime with our health nurses, especially with the Covid clinic and that type of thing. So, upon further research, what were they supposed to be at, realized that they could be classified either way, and spoke with both supervisors who preferred them to stay non-exempt, where they were allowed to get overtime. So, I'm asking that we could change that salary ordinance to be retroactive January 1st, 2021, and going forward as well.
And the funds have been there, there's no question on the funding.
They have been paid.
Yeah, they have been paid based on that, so that was my question.
Just want them to be legal.
Yes, several people, I mean, any of us could have caught it, nobody caught it.
I have no problem with it. It's just housekeeping.
Yep, it's pretty much just a housekeeping. So, I look for a motion to change the status from exempt status to non-exempt status, eligible for compensation for overtime.
Vicki Kivett makes up motion.
Have a motion.
Jason Maxwell seconds.
Thank you, Jason. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Duri. So, Sheriff, you're going to speak on this one? Okay, we have the personnel policy amendment to change the sheriff's deputy's holiday pay.
Good evening, council. So, there's two quick modifications that we're making to the personnel handbook. Commissioners have approved it already. The first, you all appropriated money for the sheriff's department to change how they do pay their road deputies' holidays. They no longer get long weekends, but they'll be paid eight hours of straight time, and so this reflects the change that happened at budget time. The second thing is, we have currently been paying our EMS employees, whoever are working on the observed holiday, they've been getting holiday pay. So, if somebody worked on Friday, if that's when we celebrated Christmas, they would get paid, but the person who worked on Christmas Day would not. And so, the commissioners approved this already. They also approved a revised holiday calendar that would, pulls out EMS, and this policy revision would get the person who works on the holiday to be the one that's paid. Other than which day it gets paid, we didn't modify it.
Anyone have questions on that? That's another just kind of cleaning things up. Shall we look for a motion to change the personnel policy amendment on the holiday pay from time off to compensated time?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Chip.
Troy Sprinkle second. Sorry, Melissa.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you all.
We're going to have a presentation here this evening from our bot discussion. Which one of you gentlemen, Eric, are you going to? I know you've been here before, but we'd like you to introduce yourself to everyone, if you would, for those who haven't been here.
Yep, sounds great. Good evening, my name is Greg Marts, I'm with GM Development, and with me tonight is Eric Ratz from DLZ. And we had teamed up on a public request for proposals back in April, I believe it was due on April 22nd. And, so, we've responded to that, and we're conditionally selected by a committee then to work with the committee over the summer. And the result of that scoping period, we presented at a public hearing with the commissioners last month, I believe it was on the 18th, but it was, was definitely last month. And we're here tonight to make that exact same presentation to the council. One of the nice things about county government, of course, is that there's many checks and balances, and one of those is that at the public hearing, we had presented some options to the commissioners, and rather than make a decision at that meeting, they deferred that decision to the council tonight. And so, again, we'll make the exact same presentation, what we're hoping to accomplish tonight is to give you enough information so that you'll be able to make, make those decisions. The result of this scoping period this summer ended up being mostly focused on security and parking. There's also fair, fairground conversation that we'll have here. But again, Eric will make, make this presentation, and then, we have then passed those budgets on to your financial advisor, which is Jason Simler here tonight. And so, after our presentation, I believe he'll have a presentation for you to tell you the various scenarios that we're presenting tonight more from a financial perspective. So, thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Eric here.
So, thank you very much. As Greg did talk about, the, the essence of what we're presenting here tonight was originally developed from a feasibility study that we presented in December of 2020. And some of the initial things that we are addressing that is at the forefront of what we need to talk about today, and also here in Morgan County to do, is to address some parking issues, as well as also some security issues that are here at this overall facility. And as Greg noted, this is the same presentation that was done on, in a public meeting on October the 18th to the commissioners. So, the first slide that we'll talk about is just the property that the county does currently own, and what we've done is, we've highlighted just to the west of this facility, as well as to the north, and then across Mulberry Street, and then also to the south, there are two parcels of property. And the reason we note this is the opportunities of where parking could go. So, what we've addressed is two different schemes with this, and within each one of the schemes, there's, there's two alternatives. One is to address a long-term, what is, looking at the higher-rated capacity count, and that would be with a parking garage on the west side, where some of the parking is now on the west side of Mulberry Street. And so, what we've looked at is, there's a 1 and a 1A, and the difference is, is some of the other things that we would do on the site. But the first thing with Site Plan 1 is to build approximately a 300-car parking garage, three levels, that would be, again, on the west side of the site. We would maintain some of the parking that is currently on this overall site, some of it is, it's all to the west of the site, or west of this building, from the north to the south, overall. So, in this option, we'd be addressing of having about 130 parking spaces, excuse me, the parking garage of 300, plus then, there's approximately another 30 spaces that we would have here on the current block that we have. So, the difference between Site Plan 1 and Site Plan 1A is what we would do in the, what I would say, the northeast quadrant of the overall site, which is right here. Site Plan 1 is, as we're here in Marksville, Morgan County, we're addressing things in the downtown area, is an opportunity to connect the annex to the, the downtown area. So, what we're looking at is creating an outdoor, a public space, such as folks driving up and down Main Street, they can get a better connection of, you know, where our government is, our administrative annex to the downtown area. And looking at some of the parking, Flowers by Dewey, is looking at that to be an outdoor public space, which would be in this area, that's right here. So, this is something that, you know, could entail flagpole, some landscaping, sculpture, sorry about this, but some type of, sure. Morgan County and what our government is. Okay. Then the second option would be something that's a little bit more, and it would be looking at the entire northeast quadrant, and this is the Site Plan 1A, looking at the entire northeast quadrant and creating a much larger outdoor or public space, something that is, could really attract a connection between this building and the downtown area, as well as really creating a, a space that is much deserving of these type of buildings that we have here on this site. Whether it be a focal element, whether it be a parklight-type setting in the quadrant of the block, again, with some flagpoles, potentially some, you know, some landscaped areas, monument, something along those lines, not, not yet determined, but just looking at this as an alternative approach with that. But it would be taking up that entire northeast quadrant of the city block. Second option that we looked at was looking at, not doing a parking garage, but looking at a overall parking lot, surface parking, that would be across Mulberry, adding approximately 86 parking spaces, and that would be all the way from Jackson Street down to Columbus Street, and to try to maximize as much parking as we could do on a, on a surface lot. We did look at all the parcels on the other side of the alley, on the west side of the alley, from this, just to see, you know, how many more spaces we could have, approximately double the amount, but also in looking at this, is that there are multiple parcels that the, would have to be looked at to be able to purchase, acquire, to be able to get a higher parking, parking count. But with this parking, the surface lot, as well as the parking that is adjacent to the building here, we do get up to about 130 parking spaces here on-site. And that addresses, you know, the immediate needs, what, with the parking garage, we were trying to address, not just the parking needs here, but also in the downtown area, looking at long-term, what are some growth opportunities from that perspective. The northeast quadrant, Site Plan 2 and Site Plan 2A, is very similar to what we did in Site Plan 1, Site Plan 1A, in looking at whether you take a, you know, the smaller part of the parcel to the north where the parking is, converting that into a public urban space, or whether we take up the entire northeast quadrant as an option with that. From a building perspective, what we were looking at is, looking at a new entrance into the facility, something that can be more secure, have a security checkpoints, and looking at, you know, the courthouse when we did the study, and looking at this, and addressing some overall needs with just being able to have a security checkpoint separating the entrance from the exit, as well as adding restrooms right at the front door for visitors as they come into the building, as well as addressing another stair and another elevator with this location for the addition. So, it would be adding to the west side at the main entrance, a new security entrance to the overall project. Then on the second floor, it would be a two-story addition, on the second level, you would have the restrooms, the stair, the elevator, and the janitor's closet, but the entrance area would be a little bit more of a, at least part of it would be a two-level or two-story type of an entrance to give a little more prominence to the overall architecture of the building and for a county building itself. The addition would be about 6,100 square feet, that's both first floor and second floor. Okay, in working with Meyer Nagim, who's the constructor of our team for this, we've obviously been going through and looking at these options, looking at what is the best value for the project, and also what would be current cost for doing a project of this type. And so, option one, which is the expansion, some, the exterior or the outdoor public space, as well as the parking garage, you can see that that adds up to a total of about 14.5 million dollars. One thing I will note is that we did break it down between the security vestibule, the parking garage, the site work, and the fairgrounds office improvements. The fairgrounds office improvements, what we were looking at there is moving three departments out of this facility, amount to the fairgrounds, and that would potentially be the solid waste, the soil and water, well, out to the fairgrounds. And so, there was an allowance that has been established for that, and again, that was soil and water, solid waste, and the extension. So, that comes up to the 14.5 million dollars for option number one, which is the parking garage. Option two, everything is the same, but in lieu of the parking garage, we would be addressing the surface parking lot. Obviously, surface parking lot's smaller, so the cost would be different for that, and the cost for the option two would be the approximately 8.7 million dollars to do these. Does anyone have any questions about any of the design items or with the budget?
Evening, my name is Jason Simler, I'm with Baker Tilly, and I serve as your financial advisor, municipal advisor for your, for this project. And I think, believe Josh handed out some schedules that we had prepared, showing the potential costs, annual costs and impact for both of these options that Eric just went through. So, I'm happy to go through these schedules with you, and if you have any questions as we're going through this. we're going through this, please stop, and we'd be happy to address those. Schedule date November 15th. If you go ahead and turn to page 4, kind of start there. And we're showing both options, Option 1 and Option 2, one with a parking garage and one with a parking lot. So, you see Scenario 1 there, the $14,565,000 that was discussed. We showed some costs for an underwriting fee, fee for if you had to issue bonds, assuming that we don't use cash on hand to pay for these projects, but we go out and borrow, doesn't have to be for all or nothing, but for this discussion, we're assuming that the county would borrow the entire amount. And so, we have a fee for an underwriter's discount, and then you see we have some cost of issuance and contingencies. So, you're looking at a total project of about $14,885,000 for borrowing. For Scenario 2, for just the parking lot, you see the cost there, the $8,675,000. You can see, again, an underwriter's fee, and then cost of issuance. So, you're looking at more like $8.99 million of total cost to borrow. So, you turn to page 5. If you were to borrow for the Option 1, Scenario 1, and would pay back over a 10-year period is what we had discussed, you'd be looking, if you look at the, on the right side, of an annual payment of about $1.6 million. And we've shown to the far right that if you were to levy, put a debt service levy in place for all the taxpayers in the county, it would require a new tax rate of about four cents per $100 of assessed value. And you can see the first year there, you can see all zeros there, and that's because if we were to, actually, if you were to afford with this project, and we were able to close on bonds in January, February, the March area, it's too late to get a tax rate in place for 2022. So, you would need to fund that $1,600,000 with cash on hand. And then the next year, you could do a combination of cash on hand versus a levy, or all levy. And talking with your auditor, I thought that the $1.6 million is something that could be feasible, but again, that would be up to the council to decide if that's what you wanted to do. If you wanted to do something less than that, we could definitely reduce that first payment and push principal back in the later years, so you could use less cash. So, you just have that flexibility, this is really more for illustration, to show what that annual tax rate levy impact is about four cents for $100 of assessed value for Option 1. Page 6, shows Option 2. If you were to borrow for the second option, again, looking at a $9 million project, bond issue, over that 10-year period, you can see the annual payment's about $960,000 with a tax rate of about two and a half cents for $100 of assessed value. So, then what we've tried to do, now you turn back to page 2 and 3. Page 2 is just kind of a summary of the two scenarios. Total amount of the, part of, part amount of the bonds, 14.8 million versus 9 million. Total debt service, that would be the principal and interest that you'd pay for the life of the bonds, is about 15.9 versus 9 and a half million. Again, the annual payment of 1,600,000 versus $960,000. And then I tried to show if you did want to use Edit as one of your revenue streams to make the annual payment, if you didn't want to levy any taxes, any new taxes, make that payment, and you strictly Edit, your 2022, if you look at Foot New Number 1, your 2022 distribution was a little over $2.3 million. So, if you were to apply all your Edit towards the payment, it leaves about $727,000 left in Option 1, $1,360,000 left in Option 2. Again, if you wanted to levy the entire amount, the tax rate per $100 of assessed value for Option 1 is the four cents, and .024 for Scenario 2, for Option 2. And then page 3, we showed what does that actually mean to a taxpayer in the county? So, we put together a couple of different scenarios. For a $100,000 home, their tax bill would increase by a little over $8.50 per year for Option 2, the parking garage, $5.15 for Option 2, I'm sorry, Option 1's $8.58, or $8.58. Option 2's $5.15. And then we kind of showed that for every million dollars increase in project size, a person's tax bill would go about 60 cents a year.
Say that again.
Sixty, 60 cents per year for every million dollar increase in your project.
Thank you.
So, that was on a $100,000 home. We did look in Morgan County, and the medium home for Morgan County is above that, so we looked at a $160,700 home. So, increase for Option 1 is a little under $19 increase for Option 1. Option 2, $11.35. We also showed for a commercial and property of $100,000. So, this would be a business. You can see it's all $27, $28 for Option 1, $16 annual increase for Option 2. And then we also looked at the impact on agricultural land. So, every $100 of agricultural land, a farmer would see their tax bill increase about $36 per year under Option 1, about $21.50 for Option 2.
Anyone have questions on that breakdown?
And again, that's assuming that you'd borrow the entire, or pay for the debt entirely from a property tax levy. If you would do a combination of property tax levy and Edit, then the impact would be somewhere in between zero and what we're showing. Would you have to answer any questions?
Any other questions? I appreciate the breakdown on the property, how it impacts the average household, that's helpful.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think Commissioner Collier wanted to address this as well on this issue.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Dan. It never gets old. Lots of changes in the last 11 months, changes that have occurred in my 23 years of being within this room, probably more changes in the last 11 months than many of the 23 years added together. And what you have in front of you tonight is from several discussions, lots of input, and a lot of thought has gone into this. And we're talking a lot of money, and we're talking affecting a lot of people. So, when I was explaining this to a young gentleman about my dilemma and that I'd probably be up speaking tonight, he just looked at me and he said, "When are we going to invest in ourselves?" I thought that was a pretty good question, and he hit it, in my opinion, I was struggling on how to come up and talk to you tonight, but I thought, he's absolutely right, and he's 21. Buildings don't last forever, but I believe we can extend some of their life, maybe under different purposes than what they were originally designed. Several years ago, after putting millions of dollars in the heating and cooling system in the courthouse, I made the comment, "How much longer are we going to continue to throw good money into a bad building?" And a certain council member, and this is all on record, if you can go back and find the tape, said, "Over my dead body, would I ever let you get rid of that courthouse?" People are very passionate about our courthouse. And if you've ever sat underneath a tree, or been in there at the Fall Foliage Festival, or any of the other carnivals, or any of the other activities, we do have a beautiful courthouse. We have a beautiful county. But if you look at what our neighbors are doing, not that I want to keep up with the Joneses, it's time for us to invest in ourselves. One thing that came up year after year after year was the security in this building. Or should I say, if you print it kindly, the lack thereof? That is an issue in today's society that needs to be addressed immediately. What you have in front of you is what I would call a business plan. I couldn't go into a lending institution and ask for an unlimited check unless I had something on what I was about to do. And then what, if it was a good business plan, they would know what I was going to do after Step 1. Doesn't mean I'm going to get there, but within a business plan, we have short range, medium, and long range. And who's to say, by the time we get done with the short range, that the medium and the long range hasn't changed a little or a lot? None of us have a crystal ball. I couldn't ask for financial advice, none of us are smart enough to know where interest rates are going, but if history's any indication, they have to be moving up. And so, the longer we wait, the more it's on a cost. The plan that you have in front of you has to be seen as being fit by both the commissioners, your executive branch, and the reason why we're here tonight, someone's got to pay for it. The board. So, with this, we have to come to an agreement on the cost, the type of buildings, whether we're on a lease, bond, where we think interest rates are going to go. We need the expertise of everyone here, and then some, to help us to know what our tax base can handle, what our constituents are willing to handle, and we need to address their concerns. It's in my opinion that the plan in front of you has many options. As you can see, he's got Site Plan 1 up, if you'll go to 1A. For some of us in the room, they might notice there's a big difference between Site 1 and Site 1A. But that has to come with agreements and being civil. The plan in front of you is a plan, subject to change. But one thing I truly believe is not one of our options tonight, is to do nothing. For this county's done nothing for too long, and it's cost us. So, I come to you tonight, the numbers tell us roughly $19 on an average assessed home in Morgan County, and I would challenge anybody that lives in a $160,000 home to tell me why they couldn't afford 19 more dollars to invest in their backyard, to invest in their community. It is my humble opinion that it is up to us to help the future generation. And that's why I come to you tonight, asking you to give strong consideration to this plan, know that this plan's subject to change, know that it's time for us to act upon something and get this county moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, we've had a lot placed before us this evening, and I don't think we're being asked to make all the decisions right now, but I, as I understand it, I think before us is a decision to either go with, get to my last page here. Option 1, at the tune of $14,561,188, $561,188. Or Option 2, 8,000, or 8,670,38. On this, and discussion, I'm sure, before we move forward?
Have a lot of questions, actually. A parking garage brings up a multitude of questions. How much does it cost to insure a parking garage? Who's going to run security for this? Is it a pay garage? Who's, who's going to keep the homeless from living in there?
Good questions.
Where, where are, well, I see there's parking here, but, you know, bigger trucks, ambulance, if they came, they can't get in there, are they qualified to do rescues inside parking garages? Is our local fire station, have they been trained for parking garages, for if there's a fire on the second or third story? That's just the beginning of questions I have with it. You know, when do, what's the life of a parking garage? When do you have, start doing maintenance? It's concrete, so the freeze and thaw, it's going to start breaking, there's going to be upkeep on it. There's, I'm sure if I sit here another couple of minutes, I'll think of even more, but those are just a few things that hit me right off the bat.
Yeah, those are good questions. I think the life expectancy, we've gone over that, and I don't know if you want to address that with, Eric, did you want to address that on the life expectancy of the parking garage?
And those are very good questions. One thing I will note is that Gary Oaks from the city, used to be an owner of a very large precast company, and he talked about how he had been involved in over 80 parking garages as the, as the fabricator of the panels, the construction of those. And he 100% supported a parking garage on behalf of the city, has also thought it was well in line with what the costs were. But I would say about parking garages, it's just like any other building, there is ongoing maintenance. You know, if you, if you have a brand-new home, there's maintenance year one, and so there's always going to be sealants, and there's going to be other things in an overall parking garage, you know? I worked downtown Indianapolis, and there's parking garages well over 50 years old. Those parking garages, they're made out of concrete, and, you know, whether it's a post-tension or stress, to how they stress the reinforcing for the concrete, they're made to last a long time. It's though that you just do have to take care of the sealants of that. One other thing I will note is about the size of the vehicles. Usually what you do in a, in a parking garage is you make allowances for usually the first floor of the parking garage, and where the ground level, you can get a larger floor-to-floor height, and so you can have spaces that are designated for oversized vehicles from that point of view. The other ones are much more about policies and procedures, and that's really county and Fire Chief Green's responsibility to make sure everyone's prepared for those items.
Thank you.
Eric, that parking garage third floor level would be open?
Yes, yes. So, you would have one level, you'd have three levels of parking, but there's not a roof on top of the third level. So, the third level would be open to the sky, in essence.
So, you'd need snow removal?
For that, for that level, yes.
Gary Oaks just joined us?
Yeah, Gary just joined us.
I had a few questions as well. I had all the same questions that Jason had, but I'm going to move on to the fairgrounds. Lot of money with no drawings of what that's going to be, where that building's going to be located. There's a long-term lease, I understand, at the fairgrounds, so does that lease have to be renegotiated? Is the county responsible for operational cost for electricity, and for maintenance, and for a brand-new building? And I haven't heard anything addressing that building and anything about that building. I mean, it's a lot of money.
I personally think that's not enough money for what will need to be done out there, because I don't think shoving extension and soil and water and the recycling in the existing building and trying to redo it is not, that's not what they want, I wouldn't want it. I mean, whenever the fair's going on, where are they going to be? Right there in the middle of everything, or? I've never seen a drawling, or what exactly is going to be done out there, I just see, and I know, I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money, but when you're talking larger projects, that's not that much money. Where would it be located at? There's an allowance that we have established for approximately 8,000 square feet for a building to be constructed for those three. You know, currently, two of the soil and water and solid waste are in the lower level of this building, obviously, extensions on the upper level. What we've done is we've talked to them throughout the process, especially back in the programming, or the study that we did in 2020, but with Meyer Nagin, and we put together just kind of some conceptual what a square footage would be, and that's what they have looked at. You know, we have thought about various You know, we have thought about various different locations. But until we get with the Fair Board and everyone else that's involved, because, you know, we also have to look at parking, what is the best way for that? You know, I think that also in just looking at that is that, you know, I've got my own personal opinions of where it should go. But I think that in looking at, we need also to make sure that it can be kind of a standalone. That it's just not in the middle of the overall fairgrounds. You know, one of the Fair Board members, we worked together for the last 20 years. So, you know, he's also got his ideas because, you know, that, that, as he says, that one week a year, it's very important for it to be next to the existing building. But the other 51 weeks, it doesn't have to be next to it. So just looking at some different ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
How did you arrive at this figure, though? Why not 1.7 or 980,000? I mean, based on square footage of 8,000 square feet?
Yeah, I looked at that and also being unison with the other buildings that are out at the fairgrounds, similar type of architectural style and the square footage for what it would be. And that's how, in a planning phase, that's how you look at developing overall budgets for a project. It's not uncommon at all.
I personally think it's a good move to move them out there. And I'm on the Fair Board myself. Many counties, you have your extended agency close to the facility. And I think that's a good move. Solid Waste is now called Morgan County Recycling. I think it just recently got renamed. But I think it would be advantageous for them to be a standalone structure of their own so that they could monitor closely where their bins are and all that. And Eric Kivitt has been to some training and talked to some other counties and has some good ideas on what's working well in other counties. So I kind of think that maybe be kind of in a corner away from everything out there and a freestanding building. That's just my input.
I, I have some questions about the parking. Because I'm new on the council and I wasn't part of some of the original conversations around it. I just need to be able to explain to my constituents, you know, why Morgan County needs either 100 extra parking spaces or 300 extra. So I was just curious, like, what, what studies did we do? Or how did we come up with this idea? Like, what was the brainchild of this?
So one of the things that has already been considered in the past is taking the grass area, the lawn areas that's on the west side of Mulberry Street, turning that into a parking, parking area. That's already been discussed before we were even involved with this. Is looking at just long-term, what are parking needs? Looking at the number of employees in this building as well as in the courthouse. Looking at just long-term, what is the best case and making sure that all the parking needs are met. Looking at the parking garage, it was trying to address an even larger kind of a, as we've talked about in some of our design team meetings, is looking at helping the overall downtown area. You know, I think that the city's spending millions of dollars, as we all know, to improve the downtown area. And it's one way that the county can have input. And as far as both in doing the right thing, but also from a financial point of view and helping the city, is being able to have extra parking with that. So that was really the dilemma or the direction that we looked at. You know, we've looked at a 200-car parking garage. We looked at a 300-car parking garage. And what we're trying to look at is, is that we're making, making an investment in this building that's going to be here for a very long time. Courthouse has been here since 1857. So hopefully, this building's here for a long time as well. And is looking at this as an opportunity to do the right number of parking spaces, and it's approximately 300 parking spaces. You know, I think that it could be a little bit less, could be a little bit more. They're looking at a budget and those are in line with what a parking garage of that size would be.
So is it designated, is it just public parking? And will it be paid parking or is it free parking? I think that was one of the questions Jason had. Is there a plan for that?
There's a lot of multiple different things have been talked about for that. I don't think that there's an exact policy that's in place for that. You know, some, some localities, it's free parking. Some others, it's minimal parking. Some, there's no overnight parking. I think that in looking at it, that those are just policies that commissioners and council and others will have to have input on.
Also, I don't work in Martinsville. So is parking during the week, business hours, is, is a problem downtown?
Yes.
Okay. And then I also think that there's not just two options. I really feel like there, there are four. Because it's Plan 1, 1A, and 2, and 2A. So tonight, do we?
I think tonight, all that is in front of us. I mean, we are not making the final decisions of a master plan here tonight, obviously. I think all that is being brought before us is the council, as the checkbook holders, is the option one being either the parking garage or option B, flat parking. I don't think there's options on acquiring properties at this point or anything of that sort. We are, we are not there yet. Even though social media may have moved this a little further than it, it is. It is, we are not there. Those conversations have not sat down and been done. So just to clarify things this evening, we, we are just looking at, they're asking the council on their position on what we would approve at this point. Would we, do we feel our stomachs could take is a parking garage at the tune of the 14.5, I'm rounding a bit here, or just flat parking to the tune of 8.6? I don't think we, I mean, it's great that the other parts have been presented to us to give us an idea of what may happen in the future. And I appreciate that. But it's, I don't think that's what we're addressing at this point this evening. Is that correct, Eric? Thank you.
I know in the banking world, we're looking at costs as far as buildings going up dramatically from what it was a year ago, two years ago. And I know one of the, there was a comment brought up tonight is now's the time to do this because of cost. Has there been any forecasting done on what this could look like? If, if we went with the parking lot, what would be the forecast of what that potential garage could look like in three to four years as far as cost?
So that's, that's really a Meyer and Agum question. And the reason Patrick's not here is because his daughter was exposed. And so he's in quarantine. So just to make sure, no one's tested positive, but it's just, you know, precautions from that. Yeah, construction costs, the construction costs, the reason costs are going up is, is two things predominantly. One is labor availability. There's a severe shortage of folks out doing the work. And secondly is product availability. Is that, you know, the, the effects from the construction industry, we will see years after the COVID period. Because during the COVID period, there were still items on the shelves. But during the COVID period, the items weren't being built. So now we're seeing those effects from that. So there is shortages and it's coming around. It, there's been a big significant difference between just now and last, this past summer. So it's getting better. But there, there's obviously still inflation costs. I mean, we're, we're living in a booming economy now, as everyone knows.
I actually asked that question on postponing the possibility of this garage. And I said, just get away from the spike in steel prices, the spike in timber, and the spike in this, go back to a tradition. And it's going to be roughly $225,000 more per year, every year that you wait. That's just the simple math of doing a traditional construction inflationary number.
And that's at traditional? I mean, if we end up in the inflation of 76, we could be sitting still and not doing anything.
Another thing that would come into play on this is talking about a business plan and phases, and there's no timeframe. With that stated, I mean, we're anticipating future growth. And I'm anticipating if you do, for those of you who've had the unique opportunity to go look at our county highway department, there's other buildings that we'll go into at a later time that need to be addressed also. And how much is the council wanting to invest in some of these older buildings? It's almost cost prohibitive. And, and one that comes to mind is the Toner Building. How much more are we going to put into the OJCPenny Building? So if we're, if we were to do in the future phase, some remodeling and bring them, and we move out the, say, the Purdue Extension and some of the downstairs, and we just bring that department alone over here, where do they park? So do we address that issue now or do we get them moved over here? And then we have another issue. Another issue that comes to mind, I am a citizen of the city of Martinsville, but their parking problems are not my problem when I'm wearing my commissioner hat. It's one that I am considerate to. But to address some of those that perhaps don't live in Martinsville or want to, are not concerned at all about the parking problems of Martinsville, I get it. But this garage is on be placed on county property and this is a county issue. And if you ever go on the court, if I had a local business on the square, I'd, I'd be inclined to put up meters or some type of validated parking so that the county employees aren't parked there during the hours and I'm open. Because the inside, you can't park on the inside of the, of the square. And, and it's gotten really, really tough with the construction traffic. I mean, Morgan Street's gone now. And I don't know under the master plan if there'll be any parking there at all when it's all said and done. So there are parking problems on the county courthouse area that we need to address. And we, we haven't done that, you know? One thing that I had looked at years ago was maybe buying some of the lots that the city has now bought and they're going to put an amphitheater there. I asked why we didn't buy that when it went, went up for sale before, two owners ago, to put county employees there to take some of that pressure off. Just didn't happen. So again, we come to you, this is, this is just a, a plan. It's not a concrete plan. But the parking garage addresses parking for now and a long future. Or if you, we just put that one section under asphalt, it, it won't address it for long. And then we're going to be putting more money in. And then if we ever come back to it, you're looking at $225,000 more per year based upon now and whenever we do it. Now, I'm privy to that because it was one of the several meetings that we had. Does that make sense? Jason, those were really good questions.
There's probably not many in this room that don't have a deep passionate love for Martinsville and Morgan County. And I've been around and worked on that square a long time. And yes, parking is an extreme problem. It always has been. Until we justify a solution, it always will be. And when I first heard this proposal about a three-level parking garage here, I thought, well, that is just insane. Who would have ever thought that there would be that need? But let me tell you, if we start flipping offices and you get a jury that gets called in, you got two jury trials going, you get all those jurors, prospective jurors coming in, they need somewhere to park. Our people need somewhere to park. Tax time, people need somewhere to park. I mean, it's not as insane as what I thought it first was. And, you know, it's going to get more expensive. I shared some of Jason's concerns, very valid points about security and upkeep and those type things. But people, we are going to grow. And Brian, what was the words of your 21-year-old person? When are we going to start doing for ourselves?
Investing in ourselves?
Yeah. I don't agree with all this, this phase. I mean, it scares me to a point. But the reality is here. We, we're facing big change. We need to be ready for this growth.
The growth is coming and we do need to be proactive rather than reactive. And I think in Morgan County, we've for too long been reactive to what we face instead of proactive to it. And I'd like to be known on this council as someone who is proactive to, to what is coming.
Thank you, guys. Couple of things that I want to say in short. Planning documents are a work in progress, whether it's a planning document, flood ordinance document, whether it's EMA, EMS document, it's all planning in place. No timeline. Everything's up to change. What I want to echo to you guys is if you don't plan now for your future, you're going to have things that's going, whether we like it or not, with 69 done, this brawl is coming from the north coming south, whether we like it or not. You have good planning, you're going to be ahead of the curve. You're going to have houses that's going to be able to be on septic system or be on sewer plants instead of septic systems that fail later. It's all about planning, guys. Make sure you have your plan in place, keep it updated. Yeah, you're going to tweak it as you go along, but it's just a working plan right now. But if we just stick our head in the sand thinking, oh, we don't need any more room, we don't need any more parking, it's going to happen for you to know it. And it's going to be really bad. And I mean, it's bad now with 69 cutting to Morgan Street the way it is, Main Street the way it is. It's really hurting some of the businesses because it's hard to, hard to get through there, hard to get out of the square, hard to get a parking place on the square if it's on them two streets. So I mean, we, we just need to be ready for change. It's going to change, it's inevitable. But good planning is what's going to get you there. Sticking your head in the sand, we're just asking for more trouble. Plus, it's going to cost you a lot more money down the road. That's all I'm asking, be open. Parking garage, I'm very pro parking. I've not let anybody, I've not hid that. I think vertical is the time to go. We're running out of space. I mean, that's, and you know, you can look at some of the communities that, that used to limit their vertical growth. And I mean, they found out that we've run out of space to have residents now and businesses. And you've seen them change their ordinances, their plans to where they allow it now. And I mean, that's, that's what the documents are. And I mean, we're, we do need, I mean, it's really tough. Come downtown and try to find parking during the day, but the night or the day traffic come from the interstate. It's bad now. Wait till this interstate's open. We're, it's going to grow. Whether you like it or not, Martinsville's going to explode. We, we've been one that's not been hit with the growth like Hamilton County, some of these other counties. But it is going to grow. All I've got to say, folks, be more than glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Were there any other questions, concerns before we take a vote this evening? Do we have anyone from the public that wanted to give any input prior to our vote? That's, well, I think that's what the architect just explained to us, that it's, we're putting a, a dollar amount on what we can spend. And then we'll move on to what we can actually get out of that and what offices will be built at that time. But we've kind of put a cap on, on where we're at on that spending.
We've done a space evaluation and a building assessment. So there's kind of some ideas as far as how much square footage would be needed for those new proposals. So I'm sure that that kind of played in how they arrived at this, this cost here. That's a good question, though, thank you. Could possibly be building on to exist and could possibly be some independent freestanding structures out there? Nothing's in concrete, no. Eric, do you have anything to share on that? And I think that's kind of because we're looking at a bond issue. And we want to kind of know what our total cost for that one bond issue would be.
And this vote tonight is to give the commissioners direction on which direction they feel the majority of the council is willing to do. This is not a vote for bonding tonight. There will be another vote to do everything else. This is just to give the commissioners direction so that they can have their team prepare the financials and get everything ready with an ordinance.
First step in a longer process. Anyone else? Do added? Why don't you come up to the podium? You're correct. We, I, I can, I can speak. You're correct. Exactly. We are not there yet. We are not there yet and that is what I have told folks that, yes, we have had a conversation. It was more of a courtesy conversation. I've been friends with you guys for 30-plus years. I think that's the good old rumor mill, Dueta. I don't think that conversation has been had. I don't think those words have came up. We've had to. But no, we are not, we're not near that. Our, the conversation I came over to have was just a courtesy to honestly ask if you're interested because there's no big secret here. That would be great to move that direction and, and that would be wonderful, but we have no intent of, of running you out of business. We just, we want to see if you were interested in selling or what other options you would look at and I think those were civil and kind conversations. You do have a wonderful location. Yes. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Terry? Thank you. Anyone else? All right. And I think what's before us now is just to make the decision tonight. There will be other decisions later, there'll be other meetings, but just like building a building, it's block by block. So tonight, the only thing that in, is in front of us is the block deciding whether we're going to go with option A or option one, which includes the parking garage, security vestibule, approximately a 300 car parking garage, site work and fairground office improvements to the total of $14,561,188. Option two, the security vestibule, approximately 100 parking space surface lot, site work and fairgrounds, office improvements to a total of $8,670,038. So we can take this one by, why don't we go with option one? Do we have a motion to approve option one? Any questions on option one? Which is the garage?
I want to make a comment. So I was privy, I just run council also, first year on council, I was invited to sit in on some of these planning meetings. And as Commissioner Collier and Hale have mentioned, you know, they're trying to address a lot of deferred maintenance issues, they're trying to position the county for the next 50 years. And, and there's a lot of, you know, the courthouse has been mentioned, has a lot of issues in it. And so, you know, what do you do? Do you, do you throw a whole bunch of money, millions and millions of dollars into the courthouse to try and renovate it, to make it modern, to make it more secure for the judges, to make it more functional for the court system? So they looked at that, but they've also come up with a roadmap, nothing set in stone, but they come up with a roadmap that I think is a good plan. It would involve a lot of, of moving people in different places, but the one reason the parking garage does make sense is if the roadmap were followed, you would have just employees, probably about 120 employees working here on this greater block. So that's why the parking garage was even mentioned in the first place. And I think it's important to realize that there is an overall big plan that they're trying to position the county in to make this good for when 69 is done. And I, and I agree with them, I think there's going to be some growth coming, whether we like it or not. I mean, the city of Martinsville has announced about 600 new homes to be built in the next three to five years. So if you want to be proactive and really do something to position the county for the future, I think the parking garage does have an argument to make sense. Now that being said, it, it's a lot of money and things can change, you know, two years from now, things could change and, and maybe the parking garage doesn't make sense for whatever reason. That's a tough call to make. I've met with several people to talk about this because it is, I mean, this is a huge decision for the county moving forward. I've, I'm fortunate, I've got some friends in the banking industry and I've kind of told them the plan. Their initial reaction when I kind of talked about it was why, why in the world's the county need a parking garage? But as you talked about, some of the ideas and some of the things the commissioners would like to do in the next, you know, however many years, there's no timeline set, the parking garage does then begin to make sense. And with interest being, interest rates being as low as they are, and they will not stay this low, with inflation really starting to ratchet up, I can guarantee you, interest rates are going to go up in the next 18 months, two years guaranteed. The cost of the building will only increase in the future. So the question is, you know, in five to 10 years, if we don't have a parking garage, will we be looking back and sorry that we didn't provide that for the county at this time when we had the opportunity and could afford it? But it's a big decision and, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, none of us up here do, so exactly which one is the perfect solution, none of us can say. It's, it's a tough decision.
Come forward.
Come forward.
There's been some discussions about big picture.
Say your name.
This is Judge Foley.
Judge Pete Foley, Morgan Sphere Court One, formerly county attorney, so I would sweat on that side of the lecturing as well. But nonetheless, there's been discussions about how the best use resources of the county and those resources include plant, physical buildings, they also include financial. And if there's a concentration or a campus developed that would provide the ability for the court system and related functions of probation, community corrections, prosecutor within one campus and concentrated, where would that be? How would that look? And if it ends up concentrated on this block, then I think Commissioner or Council member Keller's statement is, may ring true as to what, you know, the existence of the parking garage before. I leave that to the council, I'm not, but I, but I do think that there are some considerations of how that piece would fit in with the next pieces that may follow and the best use of county funds for those structures. Right now are, if you look at the court functions across those three platforms that I just mentioned, were spread out. All concentration of those employees, if they were parking together, there would be a need for that, let alone using the public need for those buildings and need for coming into court, whether it's jury trials or otherwise. The toner building is at its maximum. We've got employees already double bumped. We have no ADA compliance. There's no elevator. The security is minimal. We have, with the blessings of Commander Rogers and the sheriff, had a deputy to be within the building, but you have probationers moving in and amongst the inner offices of the probation officers. We have security issues at our own courthouse. So without getting into the weeds of those things, I think the, the comment I would leave is, is that to the extent this may be a initial step in revisioning what that, those functions of county government would look like and where they would be and how they function together and how they gain the most efficiency in use of resources and assets we have. And the courthouse still is an asset. And I don't think anything about what's contemplated would remove that. It just may re-envision things. To think and consider that. On points that have been raised before, there's no judge that decides eminent domain. That would be a county commissioner decision at the time of that. And I understand what you're being asked for is a financing or a budget for projects for the commissioners that would then, and then ordinances would come back. There's no borrowing of money that's going to be authorized by any action of the council today. That all comes through with separate set of ordinances that are the bonding or the other financing ordinances that are available. What you're telling the commissioner is, is put the details together and the cost of option A or option one or option two. So that may be cleared up as well. But the court system, the judges have a support, I think, for the council, whatever they do, but encourage you to look at the vision and, and maybe reimagine a little bit of what we have now and what it can be. Because any decision that would be made on that scope or scale is going to be made for 50, by plan itself, maybe 50 years. That's structure. But by campus or the, the utilization of that space, it's going to be a hundred-plus year decision. The last renovation to the courthouse was in the mid 70s. We're what, 45 years out of that? And, and we've grown to push at the edges of what we've got available for space. And that'll, decision will happen 50 years from now, 45 years from now as well. That's the nature of those things. But do you put together a plan and a vision that can allow for that growth and those functions that need to be together and integrated, allow them over that 100-year life cycle of maybe what the campus would look like to do that expansion in a cost-effective, efficient way? So just thoughts from our little corner of the world.
We appreciate that. We appreciate your input.
Kim, I'd like to make a comment, actually a couple of them. Richard, to you the question on the building out at the fairgrounds and is there any commercial builders in the room? Is there a commercial builder in the room? If you do the math on it, it's $141 a square foot. I'd say in today's world, that's, that's reasonable on a commercial building. So it appears they did 8,000 square feet and came up with a number and that's how that number came into play. So that being said, that's, that's a pretty decent value for an 8,000 square foot building. Now whether it's pole structure, stick, belt, concrete, whatever, $141 a square is still a good number. So that's number one. Number two, and this is, this is for me, so for the young lady out there, I live just north of Perrigan. I live just east of Louisville. I have 20 acres. I know what I pay in my taxes. And so on the way down here and actually for the last two weeks, when I've been dealing with health issues for my family, this is still in the back of my mind. I've talked to Kim and Vicki and Kelly and Jason and Chip and Melissa, all the way down the road. And up until I walked in a room tonight, I, you know, there's no parking garage, no parking garage, no, we don't need that, we don't, you know, keeping up with the Joneses, I think Brian said, and, and that's what the folks in my area are saying. Do we need that? Are we trying to be a Fishers? Are we trying to be a Carmel? This is a big decision. Chip's right. Chip's, Chip's involved in the banking world, he understands that piece of it with the interest rates and going up and going down and, and the trend is up. The trend is up. And this, this is a huge gut check for the folks on this board up here because when we walk out of here tonight, the people that we represent, I guarantee they'll be calling us saying, hey, I hope you made the right decision for us and that's why we're here. We're making the right decisions for them, we hope. And my comment is, and I appreciate Josh doing this, there's a lot of $100,000 homes in our area, there's a lot of 300,000, 400,000 dollar homes. And if you do the math, it, if you do a $160,000 home, it's $7 difference between having a parking garage and not having a parking garage. Yeah, you can't even buy a meal at McDonald's for that. It, do we need one? You know, if you look at the, the structures to the west here, if we were to look at that in the future, we're still not going to cover 300 spaces. We're still not. And we don't even know what that would cost if we had to make that venture down the road anyway. Jason's concerns are valid. They're valid. Are we going to get a snowplow in there? Are we going to have security in there? You know, when Jason and I spoke, he'd rather have his wife walk to a lit parking lot after work underneath a light rather than trying to go into parking garage, dark parking garage. And I'm with him. I agree with that. So we need to have security if we go that route. This is a huge, huge thing for our county, huge. And like Judge Foley said, this is, this is years out. This is, we're planning for, for years out. Appreciate him and, and the folks that presented tonight. And I hope everybody on this stage will look at the numbers. We, we have to, we have to represent ourselves for the folks we, we're, where we're from. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Troy. Well, we have gone over a bit, we, we were, commissioners were scheduled for their meeting at 6:30 I believe, so there's no other questions or comments. I think we do need to move into a decision on this. I think we've all heard all of it. I, I used to tell my son on his schoolwork when he didn't want to get it done or he didn't have time for that, and I would say, if you don't have time for it now, where are you going to find time later? And this kind of hits me, I don't know why that keeps hitting me in the head thinking of me telling him that, but to me, this is, if we don't do it right now, it's going to cost us more in the long run, as I see it. And I can see in four or six years. And I can see in four or six years, coming back and having to put that garage in after we've already spent $8 million or $7 million. And so to me, it's, you spend it now or you spend more later. So what, and that's kind of how I looked at that. And I think we all need to look at that that way, and I'm just giving my opinion. But I think we do have to make some decisions tonight. So I'm looking for a motion, whether you want to start with option one or option two, but somebody needs to move on this.
Vicky Kivett makes a motion that we approve Site Plan One.
Kim Meredith will second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and raising your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, in favor of option one. So all those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So motion passes for option one, five to two. Thank you. We don't need to go to option two. Yes, Diane?
May I make one comment?
Sure.
I just like, I'm Diane Hubbard, and I live in McGrath Township. And I would just like to make one comment, be careful not to trivialize that it's just $7 or $19, or whatever it is. When I was a child, I would tell my mother I wanted something for just $10, and she would respond, I have a lot of $10 to pay. Inflation is really going up. I'm already paying $200 for a month for gasoline and groceries and hybrids for farm, which is a 163% jump in one week. And I just talked with Mr. Keller last week and found out that copy paper went up 30%. And that's wholesale price. So everything's going to be going up. So he has $19. This may sound like a little money, if that's the only thing you've got going up. But for some people, it's going to be a good deal.
Yes.
So please keep that line down trivialized.
Thank you, Diane. All right, let me, my glasses back on here.
That's it, just-
I think the signature documents have come down. We want to make sure we get those back to being-
We want to make sure we got everything signed. And also, you should have a copy of the schedule for next year, council meeting.
And we had one other item that Kelly wanted to bring up just before everyone leaves.
I just wanted to bring this to everyone on the council's attention. The EMA, Martin County Emergency Management is challenging all county departments to collect non-perishable food items. I talked to Mark, and they are going to be donating all these food items to the Red Barn here in Martinsville. And I think all of us are probably feeling it in the pocketbook when we go to the grocery store, how much groceries are going up for every single person in this county. A lot of people in our county are very low-income. And so I would like to challenge the council to participate in this as one of the departments. And I would ask that you all bring non-perishable food items to our next meeting in December so they'll be available and ready for him to pick up for the 17th, and participate in the county doing that.
Thank you, Kelly.
If you could send us a reminder, that would be great. I'll do it.
I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.